Now I am. Happy New Year and welcome to the first meeting of our Carmel Clay School Board for 2022. I'd like to say the second semester has gotten off to a grand start with our students and staff returning to in-person instruction, performing arts and academic clubs are meeting as they prepare for their competitions. My William being one of them, I know the ambassadors and the accents are very excited about what's upcoming this spring. And then our sporting events are in full swing. And while the world is still in the midst of this ever-changing COVID pandemic, the Carmel Clay School family continues to persevere. And we will meet the challenges that come our way and we will keep our focus on serving the students and families of Carmel. I am certain 2022 is going to be our best year yet. So I thank you all for serving and I'm excited to get our meeting started. So first on the agenda, we have roll call. And since Louise is not able to be here yet, I believe she is stuck in traffic, we have Katie, who's going to...
All members are present excluding Ms. Jackson.
Thank you very much. Next, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello there. Ms. Novus, please note that Louise Jackson has now joined us for the meeting. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have election of officers. And annually, each year by the fifteenth of the month, we are required by law to reorganize. And this is our reorganization workshop meeting. And with that, our first point is to elect our officers. And our first officer is President of our school board. May I get a motion on the table? Mr. Kirschner.
Madam President, it would be my honor and privilege to present the following slate to the board. President Katie Browning, Vice President Louise Jackson, and Secretary Jennifer Nelson Williams.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kirschner. May I get a second?
Madam President, I will second.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Kirschner.
I would just like to thank Mrs. Spanenberg for her service to the board as President for a number of years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing that there are no other comments, let's take a vote. All those in favor of supporting this slate of Katie Browning as President, Louise Jackson as Vice President, and Jennifer Nelson-Williams as Secretary of the School Board for the 2022 year, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Yay, how exciting! And anticipating, I do have a couple of things I'd like to share. It has been my honor to serve our Carmel Clay School community as the President of our school board. Our school board is a thoughtful and respectful team of leaders who work tirelessly for you. Thank you. Our school board is a thoughtful and respectful team of leaders who work tirelessly to ensure our students are educated, protected, and most importantly cherished. I am grateful for the opportunity to work alongside each of you and alongside of the other men and women in our community, and it takes me, takes great pleasure to hand the gavel to you, Katie. I am confident you will leave with integrity and help our school board continue to use the guiding principles to help CCS and all in CCS achieve and be successful. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. With my flowers. Congratulations, Katie. Thank you. I stepped up to you, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much, Leila. Thank you so much for the, of what will be a 12-year term, your eight years of serving as at one time or another the President of the Carmel Clay School Board. Thank you. Thank you so much to Louise and to Jenny for stepping up and being willing to serve in this capacity. I'm really excited for 2022. Okay, we will now move on to our next appointments, which is going to the appointment of the Treasurer, Deputy Treasurer, Approval of Bonds for Treasurer, Deputy Treasurer, and Extracurricular Treasurers, Dr. Michael Beresford.
Thank you, President Browning. IC 2026-4-1 requires that a Treasurer be named, the Treasurer and Deputy Treasurer to be appointed in the first 15 days of January. So the administration recommends that the board consider appointing Roger McMichael as our Treasurer and Kara Corliss as our Deputy Treasurer. Further, it's recommended the board approve public bonds for the Treasurer and Deputy Treasurer in the amount of $100,000 each. It's recommended that the board approve a position-schedule bond for extracurricular Treasurers in the amount of $50,000 for the high school, $20,000 for the middle schools, and $10,000 for the elementary schools. Indiana Code 2026-4-5 requires Treasury Deputy Treasurer and School Treasurers for the school district to be bonded by an Indiana licensed insurance company each year, and the amount of the bond for the Treasurer and Deputy Treasurer is established at the recommendation of the State Board of Accounts. School Treasurers are covered by a blanket bond through our crime policy. So all this is in accordance with Indiana law and Carmel Clay School's policy. So with that, it's recommended the board appoint Deputy Treasurer and Deputy Treasurer and approve public official bonds for the Treasurer and Deputy Treasurer for the period of January 22, December, through December of 2022. It's also recommended the board approve a position-schedule bond for extracurricular Treasurers.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. Do I have a motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kirschner?
Second. Did I second? Yes, I seconded. Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the appointment of Treasurer, Deputy Treasurer, and Approval of Bonds for Treasurer, Deputy Treasurer, and Extracurricular Treasurers? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. McMichael. Now we'll move on to three point two, the appointment of General Counsel. And according to Bylaw 0150, each year it's necessary for the board to appoint General Counsel on or before January 15th. The administration recommends appointing Mr. Andrew Manna, who's here with us this evening, and Church, Church Hiddlin Antrim as General Counsel for Carmel Clay Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. Do I have a motion for appointment of General Counsel? So moved. Second? Thank you. Discussion? You go, Mike. Mr. Kirschner?
I would just like to recognize David Day, who has served as our General Counsel for longer than I've been on the board, for all of his service, and as we're looking forward to working with Andrew, thank him in advance. And just note that David is entering another stage of his career, and that's one of the reasons that we are making the change, but we look forward to working with Andrew.
Thank you. Leila?
Well, I also wanted to thank David Day and his work with our school board for over 20 years. And we look across the state at other, it's not that we don't just naturally appoint people. We are very thoughtful and we look to our leaders and we look to the professionalism of who is out there. And we have selected to work with Church, Church Hiddle for several years. And we have worked with Andrew Manna from Church, Church Hiddle with other, in other areas, and are very confident and happy with his service and look forward to our continued relationship. And we thank you for stepping up and offering to be that for our school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Leila. Anything else? All those in favor of the recommendation for appointing a General Counsel? Aye. Motion passes. Appointment of Executive Secretary. Dr. Beresford?
Before I jump on that, off of that, I'd want to add my two cents. And David Day's been a source of great wisdom for us, and I still have his phone number on my cellphone, and I expect to use that. He is not completely retired, but certainly not taking the role that he's had before. So we appreciate David's work. And I've always described David as Yoda. And back in the day, Andrew Manna was a young Jedi knight. But now he's, you know, he's made his way up to where he is now, and we appreciate his work and his team's work. As you know, Church, Church is a very diverse law practice, so they have specialists in almost every aspect of school law. So fortunate to have that happen. So now we'll move on to appointment of the Executive Secretary. Each year it's necessary for the board to appoint an Executive Secretary on or before January 15th to perform Secretary of Duties, Assistant Duties as required by the Board of School Trustees. Administration recommends appointing Mrs. Colleen Novus as the Executive Secretary to the board.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the appointment of an Executive Secretary? So moved. Second? Thank you, Louise. Discussion. Leila?
I just want to applaud and thank Mrs. Novus for her years of service. She has worked directly and she will continue to work directly with the School Board President to ensure that you have all the materials you need to help us be successful as well as help Dr. Beresford be successful in his role. We couldn't do it without you, and we are thrilled that you have continued your service to Carmel Clay School. Thank you.
Absolutely. I like to call her our very own Mary Poppins because she always has everything taken careful, taken care of with a spoonful of sugar. All right, I'd like to bring this to a vote. All those in favor of recommending Ms. Colleen Novus as Executive Secretary, raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes. Appointment of Cable Television Representative.
This is an exciting one, and I'm really sorry that Kristy isn't here with us, but each year the board traditionally appoints a Cable Television Representative during its organizational meeting on or before January 15th. And the administration recommends Mrs. Kristy Cloud to continue as the Cable Television Representative.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. May I have a motion for appointment of the Cable Television Representative? A second? Thank you, Louise. Discussion?
Is this appropriate? What does a Cable Television Representative do?
Well, I anticipate someone might ask that question, but we have a cable television, you know, station, and it's a public broadcasting. And the school system takes advantage of that at different times as well. But because we're part of that, that's part of the community, the school board has always asked if they would like to have someone on that board. And so it just likes the library board and some other boards that we have, we provide a person for that. And so it's in Bylaw 0150 that we do our cable television. Anything else? Anybody want to add to that?
Okay.
Wonderful. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of voting for Mrs. Kristy Cloud as a Cable Television Representative, raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Appointment of the Carmel Clay Parks Representative.
Each year it's necessary for the board to appoint a board member to the Carmel Clay Parks Board on or before January 15th. And it's recommended the board appoint Mrs. Louise Jackson to continue as the Carmel Clay Parks Board Representative.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Mrs. Jackson as Carmel Clay Parks Board Representative?
So moved. Second? Discussion?
I have one. I just want to say thank you, Louise, for your service. The partnership between Carmel Clay Schools and the Carmel Parks Department is long and very, very important as we work directly with them for summer programming, for ESC, and definitely that partnership for our family. So thank you for your time and service and the time that you will continue to give.
All those in favor of appointing Mrs. Louise Jackson as Carmel Clay Parks Board Representative, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Carmel Redevelopment Commission Representative, Dr. Beresford?
I feel like we should like at least do a clap, clap, and a whoosh or something after these because it is a lot of time and energy you guys put into those. So I think we'll just start that right now with the parks. I won't do that in front of the microphone again, sorry. All right, Carmel Redevelopment Commission. Each year the board traditionally identifies the Carmel Redevelopment Commission Representative during an organizational meeting on or before January 15th. It's recommended that the board appoint Mr. Michael Kirschner as the Carmel Redevelopment Commission Representative and continue in that role. I would just put, point out that although school districts are given a seat at the table in the Redevelopment Commission, we are not voting members. So it's a, it's a good way to be involved in the development that goes on in the community, but we are not voting members of that.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. May I have a motion to appoint Mr. Michael Kirschner as the Carmel Redevelopment Commission Representative? So moved. Thank you, Louise. Second? Discussion? I'm going to keep going with the thanks. Mr. Kirschner, thank you for your service on this Development Commission and your continued time that you will be giving. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Michael Kirschner as a Carmel Redevelopment Commission Representative, raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to related items, the establishment of salaries of board members. Dr. Michael Beresford?
Can we give Mr. Kirschner three claps and a wish for his S C R C? It's hard to get the rhythm, but once we get going, I think we'll, I think we'll be okay. All right, each year the board traditionally establishes salaries of school board members during its organizational meeting on or before January 15th. Indiana Code 2026-4-7 establishes the maximum a board member can be paid is $2,000. So it's recommended that the board salaries remain at $2,000 per year per statute.
Thank you. May I have a motion to recommend that the school board salaries remain at $2,000 a year per statute? Second? Thank you, Mr. Kirschner. Discussion? All right. All those in favor of voting that board salaries remain at $2,000 a year? Oh, okay, go ahead.
My only comment is that that is the salary that we've had for as long as I've been on the board. And so there's really no change. We're just adopting what we've had before.
Perfect. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion to recommend that the school board salaries remain at $2,000 per year, raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
President Browning, before you jump to the next thing, I did want to make one more comment because Indiana Code does allow school boards to pay themselves basically $112 per school board meeting and also $62 for other meetings. But the Carmel Clay School Board has chosen not to take that salary or those payments for meetings, and I just think that speaks a lot of you, you know, for your role here on the school board. And I would really highly recommend that you do not ever do the math and figure out how much you're making an hour because it's, it's pretty small. But I appreciate your service to the community, and I just want to make sure the community needs that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. All right, we will move now on to consent. On consent today, we have the Personnel Report, Claims, Payroll, Authorization to Sign Agreements for Alternative Services and Private Residential School placements, and Minutes from our Regular Session on November 22nd and Executive Session on November 22nd. May I have a motion to approve consent? Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Second? Thank you, Mr. Kirschner. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving consent, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. At this time, I will request a motion to suspend the Board of School Trustees Meeting for the purpose of convening the Carmel Clay School Board of Finance. May I have a motion to suspend? So moved. And a second? All those in favor of suspending the current meeting, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you. Mr. McMichael, would you please provide the board with some background information regarding the Board of Finance?
Yes. Also in accordance with state statute, each year the school board must organize as a Board of Finance. They must do that annually after the first Monday in January and not later than the last day of January. And the purpose, your requirement is to elect a President and a Secretary of the Board of Finance, review the report of investments, review the investment policy, and then receive a report on the financial condition of the school district. And so the administration's recommendation and in accordance with statute, the school board can choose to have the same officers on the Board of Finance as you have for the school board. So that has been, that is our recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. May I have a motion to appoint the President and Secretary of the School Board also serve as President and Secretary of the Board of Finance?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next, I'll ask Mr. McMichael to present the Report of Investments for 2021, a report on the financial condition of the corporation, and to present information regarding the district's investment program.
Okay, so first with regard to the investment policy, you have a copy of that as a part of your information, but essentially the school district invests only in government-backed securities as outlined by statute. And so it's a pretty straightforward program. We either invest in certificates of deposit or repurchase agreements, which are really overnight certificates of deposit. And then with regard to the investments, you have in front of you the amount of the investments, which is just over $22,000 and for the whole year. And so as you know, interest rates are very, very low. I remember a time where we peaked at about 1.6 million. So times have changed and investments income is, does not have the significance that it once had, unfortunately. With that, I'll go to the report to the Board of Finance. Colleen can pull this up, I believe. So in 2019, there was an Act, Senate Enrolled Act 549, added a new requirement for school corporations pertaining to what's called the Corporation Fiscal Indicators. There's a distressed unit appeal board that was formed, and the board provides the, these fiscal indicators. And the requirement is, is that at your annual Board of Finance meeting, the superintendent or his designated will submit a written report to the Board of Finance that assesses the financial condition and so, which includes these indicators. It primarily is the indicators. And, and so that's what I will do this evening. And I'll start with the 2122 student count. And we have an ADM or an Average Daily Membership of 16,129 students. The information in front of you, Exhibit One provides information on free and reduced lunch, spatial education, and English as, English language learners from 2013 to 2021. And so you can see that we maintain, we've been pretty stable relative to free and reduced lunch, running from about as low as 9% to 10.6% during these years. Our spatial education is relatively level, although you can see it's ticked up a little bit since in 2020 and now 2021. And the same is true for English language learners. And so we're showing 10.6% in free and reduced lunch, 11% for spatial education, and 4.2% for English language learners. This is a graph showing the ADM. The state did not, and you'll see this goes through 2021. That's fiscal year. So as I said previously, the state didn't provide for some reason the current year, but it's, it's 16,129. And I'd point out that, that we peaked in 2020 at 16,513. And at least the last 30 years, our enrollment has consistently grown until 2021, in which case you can see that we, we lost a couple hundred students or declined. And we did the same this year. So two years running, we've actually lost enrollment, which is, as you know, we had our demographic study updated, and this was not reflected in the demographic study. So we're not sure, we're virtually certain that some of this has to do with the pandemic. We don't know how much. But, but we do think that at least some of it has to do with the pandemic, which, which we believe that long-term, that, that enrollment, you know, we really think it will come back and that it's kind of a pause maybe. And interestingly, in... And interestingly, in 2020, when we grew to 16,513, that was about 200 students more than what was projected. So we started off with the demographic study being under the projection, by relatively speaking, a pretty significant amount, that, you know, given that we just had the study updated, in the past, the demographer has not, kind of missed the estimate by the 200 students. So that was actually very positive, because we'd certainly much rather grow than decline, as it relates to the finances. And so, but then the next year, we dropped 200 students, and then this year, we continued to decline a bit. So, time will tell, we'll have to see how that goes. The next exhibit you'll see is combining our fund balances for the, what was a general fund, and now is the Education Fund, and then the Operating Referendum Fund. And that goes through 2019, and then, and the Education Fund replaced the General Fund in 2019. And then now, as you know, we include the Rainy Day Fund as a part of our balance. And so, as you're looking at this, it's not completely apples to apples, because of those changes over the years. But what you can see is that, you'll see more in the percentage, but we've been very constant in maintaining about an 8% or so cash balance. This will average about 8.8% over these years. In the early years of this, regrettably, we were having challenges with getting contracts settled and so forth, and so that affected the cash flow, because eventually, when we settled a contract, we, of course, provided retroactive pay. But when you see the actual cash flow on this chart, we were higher in some years, because we hadn't yet settled the contract. And then when we did settle it, of course, that brought the cash down. So there's some information behind some of this, but actually, we've been very consistent in maintaining at least an 8% cash balance. Those are a couple of years, you can see here, where it dropped. And this next slide is the same information, but showing it as a percentage. And so you'll see that, you can see that 2020, we ended with 8.8% balance. And our stated goal now is, including with the Rainy Day Fund, is we'd like to get up to closer to about 12% of a balance, and which we anticipate being able to get to that point in the next couple of years. I wanted to point out, and make some comments on our Operating Referendum Fund, the Board's aware of how important that local referendum is, and you can see here that it represents 17% of our total funds for our Education Fund, the Operating Referendum, and the Rainy Day Fund. So, and you can see that here graphically, but as we've said many times, Carmel schools would not look the way it does, and we would certainly not have the programming that we have, absent the willingness of this community to support this operating referendum. So that's absolutely critical to our operation. And so, I would conclude by saying that we have maintained stability over these past years, and even before this. But, and you can see here, that our average cash balance between 2013 and 2020 has been 8.8%. And as you know, we have a stated goal of a minimum of 8%, but it is a minimum, not a maximum. And as I said, we, our goal now is to move the balance up a bit to about 12%. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McMichael. Although we are not voting on this information, are there any questions from the Board? Mr. Kirschner?
Thank you, Mr. McMichael, for all that information. It's a nice summary to get, as we start the next year. In terms of the demographic study, my recollection is that for a number of years, they had said we would be not a growing district, and we'd be stable. So, to me, the fluctuation of a couple hundred out of 16,000 every year is still pretty stable, compared to some of the surrounding districts that are clearly growing districts.
That's, excuse me, that's correct. And the projection was not, we are projected, at this point, to really grow very little, if at all, I'll say, over the next 10 years. And at the latter part of that, we're projected to decline a bit. But again, neither the growth or the decline is, you know, real significant. I mean, we would rather not decline at all, but we're not talking about losing or gaining, you know, hundreds more kids, or certainly not thousands. And the projection would say that the decline will, you know, as it starts in the elementary level, as you know, eventually, that works its way through the system until it gets to the high school, but that's, that has not happened yet. But we've had some loss of students at the elementary level, actually, for several years. Now, again, in the context of 7,000 students, you know, not that many, and certainly not as a percentage. But, so we don't see, I don't have major concerns for loss of enrollment, but it will create certain challenges, because the way the funding works, and of course, that can change, too, it always has, eventually. So you have to be careful to get too far out, because generally, you assume everything stays the same, and then you make assumptions, which, in fact, things usually don't stay the same. So I don't have excessive concerns about our enrollment. We're certainly concerned at the moment, we'll want to, you know, watch it very closely and assess, because we did not expect it to go down this past year or the year before.
Just a kind of a follow-up to, I mean, one would be, that's a good segue to my next question, but before I get to that, I think it's important to note that the state funding per pupil has gone up for 2022, 23, but also, the importance of the referendum will continue to rise as our assessed value, as a city and district rises as well. And I think it's important to note that there is a lot of great development going on in the City of Carmel, and we're thankful for that, and for how it affects our assessed value. And we're also, important to note, that we're landlocked, so that the size of our district is not going to ever probably grow again, but I think the city is doing a great job to improve what we have and continue to make Carmel what it is. So, I guess I just applaud you for looking forward and having the numbers, and I know that it's important to the city and to us, that we always have kind of a constant tax rate for the things that we could control, and that we're fortunate for the state to have given more money to education in this next budget, but that the need still exists for more money going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschner. Mrs. Spannberg?
Mr. McMichael, my question is really centered around ADM and ADM trends, and I know this probably catches you off-guard, I didn't really think about it until you were talking about the ADM in a little more detail, but is there an Indiana trend with regards to ADM, or nationally, given COVID? And I haven't looked into that, but I suspect there is some type of a trend, and I don't know what that looks like, and I wasn't sure if that is something that you have looked at, or if that has been something that you've read about, you know, Dr. B. or anybody else.
I can provide some information. I don't know, you know, every school district, certainly, but districts around us are experiencing, you know, lower enrollment than what was earlier estimated. And there, as I said earlier, that there's a pretty clear indication that the pandemic has had some impact here, as well as across the state, and I think across the nation. So I don't have any specific information beyond that, but I know, just in talking to other finance people and so forth, that it's not unusual that they'll say, you know, their enrollment's down from what they anticipated as well.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? Thank you. There is no other business for the Board of Finance. May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning the Board of Finance Organizational Meeting, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, we will now reconvene the meeting of the Carmel Clay Board of School Trustees. Reports. Dr. Bearsford.
Thank you. I wanted to add my thanks to Roger and his team, and for that report, and keeping us in good, solid ground. I'd also add that it's probably too early to see what the trend, actual trend is from the pandemic, but there's certainly a lot of situations out there that's made education full of challenges. Some of that involves people moving to different places, and childcare issues, and there's a lot of pieces to a lot of people moving around, and trying to figure out how to get through this thing. I got a little superintendent's report for you, and I wanted to start with Coach Osborne, because we celebrate his 100th win, and, which is pretty remarkable, but it's really remarkable, he's only been our head coach for five years. And in his five years, he has coached our team to two state championships, and one runner-up. And then, in the pandemic, we were on a roll when the season was canceled. And so, he's, right now, sporting a record of only one loss in the state tournament in basketball in Indiana. And so, pretty impressive, but probably most important is, if you get to know Ryan, his focus is on growing his players, not only to be good players, but to be good men. And so, Coach O., congrats on the wins, and making such a positive impact on the students and families who serve. We're fortunate to have him coached, but we're also fortunate to have him as a teacher. And he's now the department chair of our Physical Education Department, and he's making, he's just a good leader, and I'm sure that he'll continue that. So that's some good news. I want to start with something happy. Then we're going to talk about COVID-19, which is not as happy. But as expected, we did see a post-break surge in positive cases this week. The numbers are posted on our community report, and it's available on our website. And we expect to see, you know, an increase again this week, and that's our hope, that it'll plateau, and maybe we'll see a decline after that. One thing that's been a little predictable about the pandemic is, after a break, we always have a surge. In the meantime, I want to thank all of our families, and I really want to send a shout out to our staff, our teachers, and our IAs, and our administrators, just, you know, everybody on the team, because it's been difficult. And we've had quite a few illnesses of staff members, and with a shortage of substitutes, there's a lot of people all hands on deck, and teachers are giving up their prep periods, you know, to cover classes. They're making a lot of self-sacrifices to make our kids able to have school. And so, we're witnessing teachers and principals and substitutes, and even Dr. O'Stryke has done some subbing, and I've done some myself as well. And just to, you know, just to make sure that we all chip in and stay flexible, but we want to ensure to keep our kids learning in person as to the best we can. We're, of course, monitoring cases closely at the district, at the school level, and at the grade levels. We do not have any plans to return to virtual learning at this point in time. I know there's a rumor going around today, I got hit by several emails saying that I heard we were going to go to virtual, and that's, right now, it's a rumor. We're going to continue having masks in place, and we're asking families, you know, to keep your kids home if they're sick. But, you know, we will be continuing, like I said, monitoring it. You know, we've got kind of a two-pronged issue with staff absences and student absences, and we'll just keep a close watch on that, and we'll take appropriate action if we have to. But if, you know, we'll use the word trend again, if trends go the way they have been, we should see a plateau, probably another, probably a bad week this week. We're off to a fast start with some absences, but hopefully, we'll be able to keep it together and get through this next section. And I'll move on from there, if you have any questions about COVID-19 at this point in time. Okay. I want to talk just a little bit about our Carmel Clay Schools' letter to our legislators. I know you all have been working with that, and what you have before you for your deliberation is the latest draft of our legislative letter. We had an edit recommended by Mr. Kirschner, we appreciate that, and I really appreciate all of the Board for your input and feedback on this important work. Special shout-out to Mrs. Spannberg, who is our legislative liaison, and for her work this session. Again, our focus is communicating with our legislators, is that we're here to serve as a resource, and being a resource is to be able to give them feedback that, of what legislation, the impact that legislation can have at the school level, with boots on the ground, and how it will affect our operation. And so, I welcome you to check out that letter. We just had just a slight edit towards, I think, in the fourth, fifth paragraph, and then we'll be ready to roll on that with your approval. I also want to talk just a little bit about the legislative session. There's been a lot of communication, and a lot of concern regarding some of the bills that are out there right now in committee, and they're taking a lot of public comment right now on a lot of the bills. And I want you to know that we're monitoring the education-related policy proposals, and we'll continue to offer our suggestions for improvement throughout the legislative process. But I did want to say, in this pivotal time, when education is facing critical employment shortages, teacher shortages, but it's not just teachers, it's really staff all across the board. We think that aggressive educator recruitment and retention should be a top consideration when developing education policy. Evaluating all policy proposals, I think, this year should go through that lens, that that's just imperative. It's our hope that Representative Cook, and Senator Baldwin, and all of Indiana's leaders will seize this opportunity to compassionately restore the higher calling and the nobility of being a professional educator. In these trying times, we've all had the opportunity, we all have the opportunity to set Indiana apart, just by sending a clear message to our current and our future educators that they are valued, they are trusted, and that we have their backs. Anything less could result in a crisis-level lack of educators, and that will have a detrimental impact on our current students and in our communities for generations to come. So we really want to communicate that this teacher shortage is real. And I was reading a statistic earlier, you know, this, just earlier, and one in six students who are in education programs is actually going to the classroom. So we've already had record numbers of, records going the wrong way, with not very many kids in education programs. And now, when the statistics come out, that one in six are actually going to a classroom. And so, this is, you know, a problem that's growing and needs to be dealt with. So hopefully, we'll keep communicating that to our legislators, and that we can keep that in mind as we move forward in this legislative session. It's going to be a fast one, and we'll just have to monitor, see how that goes. So, the good news and the tougher news, but now, it's time for the bell ringer. And I don't know if you noticed it or not, but this is School Board Appreciation Month. So it's not the day, it's not a week, it's a month-long party. So, but January is National School Board's Appreciation Month, and we are so grateful to have you five elected officials, who gave so much of your time, your effort, and really your passion for Carmel Clay School Community. A lot of what people see is just at these school board meetings, but they don't know that while the board meetings are a big commitment, you know, we have a few of them, board members spend multiple hours a month evaluating information, serving on the various boards that we actually appointed this evening. You evaluate information, you serve on boards, you're asking questions, you're holding us as adminis- You're holding us as administrators accountable. You're corresponding with the community, and really, you're supporting the Carmel Clay Schools' family in about any way possible that you can. And it's really been a different couple of years lately. And I just wanted to say publicly that these five individuals have stayed committed to their guiding principles, with a special emphasis on number one, which is students are at the center of every decision. So, as a small token of appreciation, we want you to have a game bag, or excuse me, a game night bag of family fun. So, each of you found a bag on your desk, and that's to have some quality time with your family. And also, a tiny little bundt cake, okay? So, we wanted to bring something sweet for you. And I know it's not much, but it's something. But the bell ringer of bell ringers is that you'll find, and you've already found them, at each of your desks, there are hundreds of notes that have been sent to you from students across the district, all thanking you for all you do for the students and families that we serve. And I want to encourage everyone in the community to show our Board our appreciation for their leadership, your support, and just really the work that you do, especially in such a challenging environment. You have stayed really true to your mission. And just as a reminder, that mission is that Carmel Clay Schools will provide opportunities for all students to realize their potential in an ever-changing world. And that our vision is, together, we achieve. And I just appreciate you, and I want to join and be the first one to congratulate you and thank you and appreciate you on School Board Appreciation Month. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Beresford. Any other reports from any of the other members?
I did just want to make one note. It isn't an appointment, but it's actually a superintendents committee for policy, working with Dr. Dudley, that Mr. Mike Kirschner and Mrs. Jenny Nelson-Williams will be continuing on for our policy committee for this coming year.
All right. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Meeting closed. Thank you.
I think we should do three claps and a wish for our School Board members for appreciating.